Appeals for October 26, 2022. We'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Everybody stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, made by God, under God. Amen. I know that one. Okay. First order of business is an administrative one. Mr. Bowen has been serving as vice chair here for, in my absence, and very much appreciate that effort and all of that that goes with that. And therefore, what I'd like to do is to offer a resolution to make Mr. Bowen the designated vice president, chairman, I'm sorry, vice chairman for the zoning board of appeals for the remainder of this year. It's an annual appointment, and I'd like to do that. So therefore, Resolution 2022A, I would move now therefore be it resolved that Gerald Bowen be designated the vice chairperson of the zoning board of appeals, authorized to conduct meetings of the zoning board of appeals, and to sign resolutions and related documents, including invoices and correspondence on behalf of the zoning board of appeals in the absence of the chairperson.
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I think I'll leave now.
No, you won't.
Okay, moving on. We have some new public hearings, and I would entertain a motion for a new public hearing for the Luciano 22-19Z on 37 Prince Road. Is there somebody there representing them? No.
I'd make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have a motion on that. We have a very.
Yes.
We have a resolution.
We have a resolution of variance. Counsel, there does not appear to be anybody representing them. Is that necessary for us?
I think it's recommended that they introduce their application and that they speak on the public hearing.
Okay.
And that any questions related to the factors are addressed.
Okay, therefore, we will.
Mr. Chairman?
Ask for continuance of the, I'm sorry.
I met with the owner just past Sunday, and he walked me through the project. And he thought the meetings were Monday, and he wanted to be here, but he has a work obligation. He did say his contractor, Mr. Lewis, was going to be here today, so.
Should we wait? Yeah, let's hold that open until the end of the year, until the end of the meeting. Do we do that, or do we need to close it?
I would close the public hearing, and then you can adjourn it. If he comes in, you can make another motion to reopen it on the same evening.
All right, well, then we should continue it because we haven't closed it.
Yes, close, thank you.
I'd make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good. The next item is the 609 Salt Point Turnpike. Good evening. This is the Arietta residence, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, welcome, sir. You want to come up, have a seat there? We've seen some pictures.
You've seen photos, yes?
Yeah. I just don't understand why you don't want to live there.
I know, right? My name is Chris Marta. I am here representing Ms. Jessie Arietta, the property owner, who's also here. I'm acting as her owner's representative, designer, project manager, and I reside in Kingston, where I have my firm that I've had for about 20 years now. Only the past five years in Kingston. So we are, as you are aware, applying, submitted an application for variance on a few things so that we may proceed with demolition of the existing property and the erection of a new single-family home.
Mm-hmm.
Specifically, the side and rear setbacks from 25 to 15 in the side and from 50 to 15 in the back, as well as a change to the impervious square footage.
Okay, and we've got the drawings of your, of what you're proposing there in terms of facility. I did some rough calculations, and you may have a better understanding of it. The dwelling itself looks like it's about 13% of the coverage.
Approximately, yes.
Roughly, which leaves 2%, for the impervious issue which you're talking about.
Correct.
Can you talk to, because then the rest of it really is taken up with the driveway, and going from 13 to 20, what is it, 29?
Yeah, 29.
29%, which is a large percentage.
Right, from the sort of the max 15%.
So it looks like most of that's being taken up, that 13 to 29 is being taken up with the driveway.
Correct.
Talk to us about the driveway. I mean, are we looking at blacktop? Are we looking at, is there any way to look at some type of pervious alternate in some parts of this?
Possibly. I mean, we approach it from the perspective of looking at what the current property has, which is slightly more than the 29.9% that we're asking for.
Right.
It's 30.1. So we looked at it from the perspective of trying to improve or better that 30.1 down. We're open to, you know, options you may have to mitigate that driveway itself. I know that there's an interest on the part of the client to potentially include some kind of heated element to aid with, you know, icing and that in the driveway, so some portion of it would have to be amenable to receiving that kind of an installation. Although obviously, the final say as to whether or not that's going to happen will depend on cost, implementation, energy usage. We haven't delved deeply into.
Yeah, I know it's the, you have the building, the dwelling, set back on the far end of it. That's probably where the, that's where the current, is that where the current structure is?
Correct. So the current structure is way back.
Right.
There's about a foot and a half to two and a half feet between the back of the house and the rear property, and three and a half to seven feet on the flanks. So we've moved it forward. We understand that there is an existing septic system and leach field somewhere in the front half of the yard, which we expect will have to be removed, rebuilt, resubmitted.
And you don't think you can fit it into the current yard setbacks? I see that little square in the middle.
The current yard setbacks, you know, as interesting as a tiny home would be, you know, I did the math, it would leave you with rooms that are about six and a half foot wide by fifty-some-odd feet long, which.
So are you going to use a similar footprint, or you're moving it up how much?
In terms of what's permissible versus what we're proposing, based on the.
No, there's another one. No, I think, tell me, Rich, raise your question.
The existing footprint, are you using that one or a new one?
We are, the existing square footage of the footprint.
Will stay the same.
Is essentially the same in the new, between the current property and the new, and the new house.
Which is.
The location of it has changed, obviously. We've shifted it forward to increase the rear and side setbacks.
So the house is going to be the same size, just moved up a little bit?
Yeah, there's a slight difference that I can calculate for you in terms of the actual square footage of the current property versus the new one. They're fairly comparable.
Okay. Sure, the dwelling itself, yeah, there's the old one.
This is the new one.
Yeah, the old one is on, is on the separate sheet that.
Okay, let me get a clear.
It's the survey from the site surveyor.
So the proposed is 15 feet from the back and then equally 15 feet from either side?
Correct.
Okay, so that, okay. Then, okay, then, as we look at then, as you've drawn it here, I see some opportunity for pervious, for the driveway. Your car's going to come up, you want to be able to turn it back out, turn it and come down. But on the other side where the entry is, might be some, and, okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there was a previous iteration that had the driveway sort of connecting more directly to the, you know, the garage, and then creating sort of a smaller walkway perhaps between the garage and the entry itself.
Yeah.
So there's some potential square footage to be removed from the driveway in that condition.
Okay.
And that connection doesn't have to be a solid sidewalk, too. It could be a series of pavers, it could be, you know.
Something that's, something that's pervious, yeah.
Right.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
I see there's a generator that's proposed there.
Correct. And this might have been an oversight on my part when I asked for the side setback. I wasn't clear whether or not the side setback should include enough room for the generator or not, so.
Because we need three feet from window, right?
So I'm assuming that that means my request for side setback needs to change from 15 to 12?
Probably.
Yeah, I would say approximately.
The accessory structure of the generator is required to be half of the required setback.
Oh, really?
Which? Interpret that, please.
Seven and a half feet.
The required setback is, for the side yard.
Twenty-five.
So then it would need to be 12 and a half.
Okay.
The accessory structure would need to be 12 and a half, or it will need a variance as well.
Okay, the generator's on the side of the house, that's what I'm, okay.
So that can be 12 and a half.
So we'll need, we'll just, we need to adjust that. Okay.
And will there be propane tanks out, or are you going to bury something?
Undetermined at this point.
May I make a note of that, too?
Okay.
On the new plan, where's the garage?
I don't see it on the first.
It's underneath, it's under the, under the house.
It is, I saw it in the side.
You drive right into the.
You drive right into it from, right. It's the first floor.
Heights, three levels to the house.
Correct.
Which I think is pretty creative.
Yeah.
Although your style will be a little different from the houses on the left and the right.
Yeah, it's, I think it's a little bit more sort of monolithic.
Good way of putting it.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Other questions?
Just point of clarification for myself. So I need to change, amend the application so that the side setback on the right side of the property is minimum 12 and a half feet.
Minimum.
Yes.
And that will involve re-advertising the public hearing because it's a greater variance than the 15 feet that's been requested.
So we'll need to close this public hearing and have a public hearing next year, next time with these changes.
If there's enough time.
If there's enough time.
I mean, I don't know whether you want to amend this one and then do a re-advertising fee, or whether we're going to close this one and open a completely new one for a full application fee.
So the advertising fee would be cheaper for.
Would be cheaper if you re-advertise.
So if we amend?
Yeah.
So I'd like to amend this.
I mean, if I amend to 12 foot seven, which is an inch above the minimum 12 and a half based on the current 25 setback, does that still require a variance?
Yeah. You're still requiring a variance on the side.
You're required to have 12 and a half, 12 and a half feet.
Well, 25 is what you require.
But hold on, if.
But the accessory structure is half the setback, so it's 12 and a half.
Correct.
So if you can meet the 12 and a half, we're good. If you can't, then we need to.
You think you can?
Advertise again. Okay, problem solved.
Okay, that's solved, then we don't have to.
You won't have to re-advertise if you can meet the 12 and a half feet.
Okay. So I can, as part of a sort of a secondary submission, I can provide you with a drawing that shows that information as well as the specs on the equipment we're proposing to use.
That'd be good.
With required, you know, everything around it, then show that in a plan to demonstrate that we're meeting that requirement.
If this dimension on your picture is 15, 15 foot five inches.
Correct.
Then that means if the generator's no wider than, if I'm thinking correctly, three feet, it's within the 12 and a half, right?
Correct.
And I don't, it's probably not more than three feet.
No.
Well, depending on the size.
Well, and that's the thing. I think therein lies the crux, right? Depending on the equipment, the size, the capacity, which is why I'm asking for the opportunity to just provide you with.
Full house, different dimensions.
Details to confirm.
You're going to do a full house, you're going to probably look at the 15 or 17 KWs.
Right.
I would think.
Which is not more than 2 and a half feet.
I have a 22, and it's not.
Yeah, okay, all right. Other questions?
None at this point.
None at this point.
Counsel?
No question?
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing on November.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good.
And I will.
And you'll look at the, so you're going to look at, you'll look at the tank, and you're going to look at the pervious, impervious.
Correct. And I will aim to have this supplemental information to you ahead of the November 17th, two weeks ahead of the November 17th meeting, so that you can review it.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, two weeks ahead.
If you discover that the tank or the generator requires it, please tell us at least 15 days in advance.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's probably an interesting project.
I think it's, it's been a long time coming for that property.
Okay. Shall I see Mr. Luciano?
He's not here.
Are you representing him, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Jeffrey Lewis.
Let's see, where.
Oh, we have to open it back.
Have to open it.
Open it again.
Motion to open the public hearing for Mr. Luciano?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, sir. Good evening.
Hi.
Can you tell us a little bit about what?
The project?
Yes.
Well, it's a new front entry porch. He has one now that's, it doesn't pass any code, the steps are too high, and it's kind of falling apart. So his house is a ranch, one-story ranch, and on the left and right side, the bedroom and the dining, and the living room come out four feet. So it's kind of like in four feet where the front door is, and he wants to build a porch across there.
Okay.
So we're going to go, it's 24 feet in between and six feet out. So we're going to come two feet out. We propose to come two feet out past the front of the house, which is about one foot past the edge of the fascias and gutters above. So we're looking for the variance approval to do that.
Okay, all right.
And there's some plans there that I drew up about the construction and the measurements and that.
Questions on that?
None.
Are there anybody else from the public? No? Entertain them, go ahead, Paul, do you have?
Mr. Lewis, how you doing? I met with Bob on Sunday, and he walked me through the project. And the only question I had is that with the, just impervial, pervious materials is going to be for the stairs, right? Because you're going to bring the stairs out a little bit further?
Yeah, the stairs will come out a little further, and they'll sit on the existing masonry pavers.
So you're going to put them on top and not going to take any out? Just going to build the stairs on?
Right on top where the existing stairs are, but they'll be, come out about two feet.
Other questions on that, Paul?
No, that was pretty straightforward.
Okay. I'd entertain that, a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't get that vote. Who moved and who seconded?
I seconded, I think.
Thank you.
Sorry, we have to slow down. Gentlemen, we have to slow down in the first two seconds. All right, we have a resolution, I believe?
Yeah.
That's your, Paul?
Resolution to grant area variance, Robert Luciano, 37 Prince Road, Hyde Park, New York, 12538. Date, October 26, 2022, Resolution 22-19Z. Whereas the applicant, Robert Luciano, has submitted an application for an area variance to construct a porch on the front entrance of the house. The project at property located 37 Prince Road, Hyde Park, New York, identified as tax parcel number 6163-02-745895 in the Greenbelt zoning district, the site. And whereas the project is depicted with measurements and is sketched prepared by Mr. Jeff Lewis dated September 22nd. Whereas applicant seeks an area variance from the zoning law, section 108-5.152, permit a front yard setback of 35.7 feet, where 50 feet is required, a second front yard setback of 30 feet, where 50 feet is required, and impervious area for stairs from 22.6% to 33.8. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267-B, the town law, and Hyde Park zoning law, section 108-33.6B regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The current entryway is in poor condition and has uneven stair risers. The new porch with a new entryway will be compliant with current zoning codes. It will also enhance the aesthetic appeal of the house and provide an outdoor area which will be 90% in the footprint of the house and allow viewing of the private lake which the house has deeded rights to use. The proposed project will enhance both the appearance and the value of the property. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The variance is necessary because the house is already less than 50 feet from the street. The house was constructed in 1955. The proposed porch will extend less than six inches past the roof line. The applicant is seeking an area variance because the applicant will be unable to make these changes without a variance. Requested variance is numerically substantial. The variance will change the permitted front yard setback from 50 feet to 35.7 feet, which is a decrease of 26, 28.6%. The other front yard setback will change the distance of the house to the road from 50 feet to 30 feet, which is a decrease of 40%. Additionally, the impervious material will change from 32.6 coverage to 33.8 coverage, which is an increase of 1.2% for a total of 144 square feet of impervious cover. Any impacts of this encroachment would be less substantial than the house itself, and any detriment to the neighborhood is far outweighed by the benefits to the applicant. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The creation of the front yard setback requirement to allow a variance of 15 to 20 feet or so, I'm sorry, so a front porch can be built will not have a negative impact on the existing neighborhood. The replacement of the porch will not impact the visual environment since there already is a porch on the property. The difficulties are self-created. Be it further resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Bowen.
Yes.
Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Keep going, working, though. That's a nice view there on that little pond.
You know, the area, it's nice there. So I can get my permit then?
Ted can answer that question.
Okay. Okay, the next item, we're continuing public hearings. 21-15Z, Camp Victory Lake. We are looking for approval from the state?
State court.
Have we received, Madam Secretary, have we received any further?
No, there are no new updates.
No new updates?
I confirmed that today.
Counsel, is there, we have gone through this. I think we were prepared for a resolution, and we're waiting for the other one. There's no way that we can go ahead and approve the resolution?
No.
Okay.
There's not. You have to continue the.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on the Camp Victory Lake, 21-15Z. Is there, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we continue.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, Camp Victory Stays, okay. Next item is 22-16Z, Ms. Sherri Dingman. Hi, good evening. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
At the last meeting, we had an opportunity to hear from you in terms of your concerns and your request for changing the decision that has been made by the, by the town. Ms. Moss was not available at that time, and so we've asked her if she would also have an opportunity to briefly review her decision because the, before the board is, do we uphold Ms. Moss's decision or not, which you have requested to be overturned?
Yeah, let's clarify this. Her decision was it can't get a building permit without doing a complete site plan. My position is some of the things required for the site plan are unattainable. Some of the things that are attainable, and I brought a copy of the blueprints, I went through this in 2008. I had a design engineer draw up the blueprints for the house to apply for a building permit to put in a window at that time, and that was denied because the building didn't have a certificate of occupancy. So this kind of feels like deja vu. I also thought a little bit about Mr. Andros's letter over the week. I'm a little appalled at his letter because the Botini truck driver is my son David, who's lived across the street from him for 25 years, and he doesn't recognize him. And that just, that's just incredible to me that he could write a letter and say I should turn over my federal tax records so you could find out who the tenant is. So I just want to put that on the record. I think that he's doing this to harass me. The lot next to me sold this week. I wrote the lady over taking 90 square feet of her property accidentally and suggested three solutions, that I could buy it from her, that I could give her land on the other side, up on the hill, or take the fence down and move it. I did not get a response from her. Instead, the piece of property went up for sale. Called the real estate company, it's already sold. I'm hoping it's sold to the people on the house on the corner.
Okay.
But that's what I know now.
Okay, good. Thank you for that information. Ms. Moss?
As, as Dr. Dingman indicated, we've been going through this. This is not the first time we've approached the issues that exist on the property from the town's perspective. As she said, she applied for a building permit years ago. She did have drawings done. At that time, what she was trying to do was not permitted. It was under a different zoning code. So it's new situations. It is possible for her to move forward without a use variance. It is possible for her to move forward without a use variance. So, I'm hoping that the board will look at the history that was prepared through our records, and Ms. Dr. Dingman and the town can work our way forward.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Questions, board members? Any? Counsel, any?
No, I don't have any questions. I appreciate the zoning administrator's feedback, as always, and now you've had an opportunity to ask any questions of her as well, which is part of the reason why the public hearing was adjourned.
I do have a question. Somebody might have the answer to it. I spent the last two weeks trying to find the old laws. Town library doesn't have them. The town hall does not have them. Where would I find a copy of the laws that were in effect in the 1960s?
I think you'd need to foil that through the town clerk.
I did that already and was told they didn't have them.
They're, the laws were advertised in 61 and 63. The clerk has a copy of those advertisements and the...
Does she have the actual laws someplace I can refer to?
That would be in the advertisement.
The whole, the whole local law is published in the paper.
Oh, so I need to go to the town paper for the 1960s?
No, the town clerk has them in, in her records.
She does, okay, because I called her office this morning and that lady answered the phone. Didn't know, because she's only been here for three years. Said she would try and find out for me.
The proper mechanism would be a foil request?
I appreciate that. I did a foil request before, and those, that information did not come back, but I can try again.
Okay. Other questions? All right. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I believe we have a resolution. Who's saying that? Jim?
I can read.
Yes, please.
Dated today, Sherri Dingman, 23 River Road, Hyde Park, Resolution 22-16Z. The Town of Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals, at a meeting duly convened on September 28th of this year and continued to today, reviewed the facts in application 22-16Z as submitted by Sherri Dingman, and whereas the application was determined to be a type-two action under section 6 NYCRR, Part 617 and Section 54-7 of the Code of the Town of Hyde Park, and whereas said application requests an appeal from the zoning administrator's decision specifically regarding section 108-33.4E alleging that the zoning administrator misinterpreted property records and denied applicant's building permit. Whereas, whereas, whereas... Whereas all testimony has been carefully considered and the following pertinent facts noted: one, the applicant states that the cottage apartment existed prior to 1969 and has been used as a dwelling unit during her entire tenancy. However, the building department's records indicated that a permit was granted for a two-car garage. Said permit was never closed down. The applicant also states that, quote, "town records show that the structure is a cottage apartment with a basement." However, the records, the records the appellant references are assessor's records. It has long, it has been long established that the building and zoning records may vary from the assessors. The latter are generally based on observations while visiting a site. The former contain a chain of the original request and ultimate approval. Two, applicant states that the structure appears on the town records as a, quote, "cottage apartment," but building and zoning records indicate it was approved for a single-family residence and at some point a two-car garage. Three, the applicant has requested that this board declare the cottage apartment an existing structure. However, the town has no records, no records of approvals for an accessory apartment, and there's no record of a review nor findings stating that all requirements for an accessory apartment have been met. Number four, additional public comments received from the owner of an adjoining parcel and another neighbor to the west indicate that additional improvements were undertaken by the applicant, including adding a new driveway, the removal of soil and rock to create a retaining wall, which appear to be off-site, the installation of a storage building within a side yard setback, and changing the exterior doors of the two-car garage from automobile doors to a, quote, "man-woman" door with a window, without first obtaining building permits or site plan and special use permit approvals. We are note that these apparent transgressions are not related to the subject of the, of the appeal presently before the zoning Board of Appeals. Now therefore be it resolved by the zoning Board of Appeals that application 22-16Z appealing the zoning administrator's building permit denial dated June 13, 2022, is hereby denied and affirms the zoning administrator's decision on the following grounds: one, the zoning administrator established that the town's building and zoning records indicate that 23 River Road is a single-family home with an accessory two-car garage. Two, the applicant failed to supply evidence that clearly establishes her claim that the garage was properly approved as a dwelling unit or cottage apartment. As noted above, the assessor's records frequently do not match town and building records. The assessor may directly discover unapproved and unrevealed improvements made by homeowners, by homeowners and add the improvements to a property card for the purposes of better estimating the home's value. Three, the zoning records indicate that no certificate of occupancy was ever issued for the two-car garage because the building permit was never closed. Four, we concur with the details of the zoning administrator's summary in a letter to applicant dated June 13, 2022. Quote, "The initial property card does not include a garage. The structure description from when it first appears on the property card in the assessor's record is listed as a two-car garage with apartment above. Note, building permits were required at that time, and a building permit for a garage of that dimension is on file, although the height of construction differs from the building permit application form. There's also survey in the file from 1979 that includes the structure and is labeled as a garage. There is no request or approval for an apartment above the garage found in the building department files or the zoning and planning files. The building department records and planning zoning records establishes approvals and authorization for construction and uses. Although the cottage is recognized in the assessor's records, there are no associated records in building and planning zoning authorizing the second building unit. Likewise, there are no records in building and zoning, or in building, planning, and zoning for a conversion of a garage into living space or to convert part of the garage into a third dwelling as a studio apartment. The record of use is a one-family dwelling."
This motion has been moved. I will second it. Madam Secretary, would you take the?
Yes. Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Bowen.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Chairman McNary.
Yes. Therefore, this zoning upholds the decision of the administration. I, I know this has been a long thing, and I wish you luck in terms of finding a way to, to resolve this, and I think there is one here that can be done.
Could you suggest to me what that might be?
The remedies were outlined in the letters that were sent. I would think it would start with your plans that you did have done that I didn't see on file downstairs. I mean, there might be, but I didn't see them.
The problem is the information from Dutch County Department of Health for the septic in the backyard. That does not exist. I contacted them in 2008. I recontacted them. You're asking for information I cannot get.
Maybe they will accept information as to what's there and whether or not it will support the number of bedrooms that are on the property?
They told me to talk to the building department. I feel like I'm caught in an infinite loop here. They said it was quite common in the 1960s for people to not turn in things to the county.
It is, and they may not, but I, I believe you know what the system is?
I've called them twice. I've contacted them twice.
You know what the system?
No, I do not. I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay, okay, I thought you did.
No, I don't. I don't understand how to get records that don't exist. You asked me to get records for the Dutch County Department of Behavioral Health, blah, 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 and I've called them, I've contacted them more than once. They do not have those records. They don't come out and do inspections on septic tanks that are already in the ground. You're asking for a document I can't get. So, I don't know what I'm supposed to do. They told me to talk to the building department in Hyde Park.
I don't know that we're going to resolve it here tonight in the public hearing.
I need to know how to resolve it, and I don't. So, I face with the situation, I can't get a building permit for putting in a window unless I can get the county to inspect a septic tank that's already buried.
I didn't say you needed to get the county to inspect it.
You said I need a document from the county in the stuff that you gave me. You have all the other stuff. All right. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good luck.
Well, just go to court and say I can't get a building permit, and then they could put me in jail if they want.
No, we don't go.
Don't count on it. I can't, I can no more produce documents from the county for that septic system than I can tell you what's on the dark side of the moon. It's an impossibility, and it's totally irrelevant to putting in a window. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next item, Kathleen Nichols, 22-18Z. I'd like a motion to continue the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second by Jerry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good evening, sir.
I'm Ray Nichols. I'm his spouse and representing her, okay?
Okay.
I think you got everything. Is there any questions? What, what do you need from me?
Just basically, if you could just run through very quickly.
Could we open?
Yes.
You're asking for a variance in terms of insulation of a generator?
Yes.
And it's located, I mean, would you tell us where the variance, why you need the variance?
Because I'm too close to my neighbor's property line with a generator.
Okay. And the neighbor's property, what, what is on that side?
Lawn.
Just lawn?
Yeah. And then this, this, this house over here about probably 50, probably 25, 30 feet over this way. And this is all just backyard like mine.
Okay, okay. Are there questions?
No.
None.
You, you had been using the generator prior to getting the variance, correct?
No.
Was it installed?
It's there. Part was installed, hasn't been finished yet.
Hasn't been finished, so it's just, it was installed, but you hadn't been using it ever?
Haven't been using it. Still got, they still have the trailer switch. We did it because of, didn't realize till I went over to town that you had to get the variance.
Of course, yeah.
Asked for a permit, and then Ted informed me to shape up, okay? And the LP tanks have been there since 1980, okay? Same with the shed, so we're getting it all done at once.
Okay, all right. Other questions? Okay. Anybody else from the public hearing? None. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I believe we have a resolution. Yes, sir.
Resolution to grant area variance dated October 26th. Resolution 2218Z. Whereas the applicant, Kathleen Nichols, has submitted an application for area variance to install a 15-kilowatt generator and two LP tanks at property located at 22 Roosevelt Road, Hyde Park, identified by tax parcel 616404795395 in the neighborhood zoning district. Whereas the project is depicted on a plan prepared by Kathleen Nichols, whereas the applicant seeks three variances. Two LP tanks, the applicant seeks an area variance for zoning law section 108-5.15 to permit a side yard setback of 4.3 feet where 10 is required. The generator, the applicant seeks a variance for zoning law section, same one, 108-5.15 to permit a side yard setback of seven feet where 10 is required. And a woodshed, the applicant seeks an area variance for zoning law section 108-5.15 to permit a side yard setback of 4.6 feet where 5 is required. Whereas pursuant to New York NYCRR 617.5C17, granting of an area variance for a single-family, two-family, or three-family residence is a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved, the zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267-B of the town law of Hyde Park, zoning law section 108-33.6B2 regarding the very requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable effect in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The generator and two LP tanks will be situated on the east side of the property approximately 100 feet from the road and will not be especially visible at that distance. Their location to the nearest house is approximately 45 feet and was recommended by the generator installer and LP gas provider. The existing woodshed is situated on the east of the property approximately 150 feet from the road and approximately 65 feet from the nearest home. Two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The location of the generator and tanks have been especially placed to minimize underground gas piping and sure a safe distance from the primary residence. The requested variances is numerically substantial. The three variances will change the permitted setback from 10 to 4.3 feet for the LP tanks, from 10 feet to 7 feet for the generator, and 5 feet to 4.6 feet for the shed, which is a 57% decrease, 30% decrease, and a 4.6 decrease respectively. However, the placement, this placement encroaches slightly less than the existing house and shed. Any impacts of this encroachment would be less substantial than the house itself, and any detriment to the neighborhood is far outweighed by the benefits to the applicant. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the general neighborhood or district. The variance requested will not have a significant impact on the surrounding environment. The generator's footprint is small and is used infrequently. The generator is intended to be used only to provide emergency power in the infrequent blackout occurrences, which seem to be happening more often, with the exception of brief weekly maintenance operational tests. The difficulties are self-created. The applicant stated the house was needed, has needed a backup generator for long, as long as she has owned it. The placement was chosen to minimize both noise level annoyance and minimal visual disruption. Be it therefore resolved, that the zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variances subject to the following conditions: pursuant to section 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked. Two, payment of all fees and escrow.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All, Madam Secretary, would you call the board, please?
Yes. Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Bowen.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Chairman McNary.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you for coming. Okay. Okay. Next on the docket is the resolution for Mr. Ishak. We have had a number of public hearings, and the public hearing has been closed. In deference, is there any new information?
Yes, we're closing.
I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah.
Oh, yes. We have to announce.
Mr. Donnelly is recusing himself from this particular topic. Sorry. Okay. Is there anything new that we?
No, nothing new.
Okay, okay. 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 We have weighed this, and you'll see in the resolution, we have made site visits. We have had a lot of discussion about this. This has been, we hope to, to resolve that. Therefore, I would like to read a resolution. I would move this resolution to grant an area variance, Christopher Ishak, 34 Green Bush Drive, October 26, 2022. Resolution 22-08Z. Whereas the applicant, John Carroll, on behalf of the owner, Christopher Ishak, has submitted an application for the area variance to increase density to allow for a two-family dwelling on a parcel slightly undersized at property located at 34 Green Bush Drive, Poughkeepsie, New York, identified as tax parcel 616303382434 in the neighborhood zoning district. And whereas the project is depicted on the plan entitled Site Plan Alternate Alterations to Residence of Mr. Christopher Ishak Prepared by C.T. Grimm R.A. dated April 12, 2002, 2202. Whereas, 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 whereas each member present on site visit observed the issues outlined in the order to remedy continued to be present, including wet ground and septic order. Whereas the rendering in this determination, ZB has considered all materials submitted with the applicant as well as comments made during the public hearing and additional correspondence submitted by the property owner. And whereas the applicant's standards for considering an area variance are set forth in the town law section 267B in Hyde Park, zoning law section 108-336B2, which require the board to take in consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the general neighborhood or community by such grant. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the town law of Hyde Park, zoning law section 108-336B2 regarding the requested variance. One, the requested variance may produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and/or be a detriment to nearby properties. The requested variance will result in an increase in the intensity of the use, of the permitted uses and at the site currently used, illegally used as a multi-dwelling residence. The applicant ceased using of the third dwelling after receipt of the order to remedy, and the applicant now seeks to legalize the property as a two-family dwelling. Granting this variance exceeds the permissible density under the town code. The variance would increase the legal density from a single-family dwelling on .796 acres lot to a two dwellings on the same lot size. The increased intensity of the use of the site will likely cause a detriment to a neighborhood due to increases in parking, traffic, and noise, which comes with additional occupants. The applicant verified during the public hearing that the illegal commercial business activities at the site related to car repair or maintenance have stopped, reducing some traffic noise and congestion. The character of the neighborhood is largely composed of single-family residents. However, there are two-family residents in close proximity to the site, both of which are inconspicuous. The applicant seeks to establish a second dwelling unit at the site. The site is .796 acres, and the zoning board law requires a minimum of .5 acres per dwelling unit, requiring one acre for a two-family dwelling. Therefore, the site cannot be developed or subdivided to have a second dwelling unit without violating the zoning law's density requirements. An alternative method for establishing two dwellings while complying with the density limitation would be to purchase adjoining property and merge it with the site. The neighboring parcels are already developed, and this is not a feasible alternative. Another alternative is to legalize two dwelling units, is to subdivide the property. However, this method would still require area variances as the lots created, would continue to be undersized even for one dwelling unit. The applicant stated during the public hearing that he does not reside at this property and uses it exclusively as a rental unit. The owner is not deprived of this benefit by the zoning administration's determination, as he is still permitted to rent the single-family dwelling. Number three, requested variance is not numerically substantial. The property is .796 acre lot where zoning code would require one acre lot to accommodate a two-family dwelling. This represents a variance of approximately 20 percent over the permissible density requirements. In addition, there is a substantial area impermeable exposed bedrock. Number four, requested variance may have an adverse effect and impact on the physical and environmental conditions that have existed for a significant number of years in the general neighborhood or district. The applicant did not indicate that the structure itself will undergo any exterior expansion or change in the size of the footprint. The variance to allow a legal two-family dwelling will not, will likely not reduce all adverse effects or impacts on the physical or environmental conditions from the current legal use. The applicant has obtained an adequate number of garbage receptacles to properly manage the refuge at the property, thus reducing the impact of debris and litter in the neighborhood caused by the site's unkempt trash. The owner stated an installation of some form of septic mitigation was made to accommodate the existing multifamily use, but no evidence was provided to verify that the water and/or septic system would meet the requirements for two dwelling units. Number five, the difficulties are self-created. However, the applicant claims to have bought the property as is, believing it to be approved for multiple families. The certificate of occupancy only authorizes a single-family residence. The assessor's records suggest that the property has been listed as a two-family residence for at least the last 10 years and has been taxed based upon that classification. However, the expansion of the property's interior from a one-family to a multifamily dwelling was illegally constructed in approximately 1992 and the absence of the necessary permits and approvals from the town's building department. He was issued a notice of violation and order to remedy on July 10, 2021, yet continued to collect rent from at least three rental units for several months. Additionally, the site is not served by sewer. The Department of Health must provide authorization for any expansion under the circumstances presented here. The applicant only sought this variance to remedy a notice of violation and order to remedy dated July 10, 2021 issued by the zoning administrator. Be further resolved that the board, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. Payment of all fees and escrow. Two, permanent removal of the third dwelling unit. Number three, apply for and obtain site plan approval and a septic use permit from the planning board authorizing the two-family dwelling. Number four, apply for and obtain the necessary building permits to have the illegal construction of the two dwellings legalized in accordance with state and local law. And five, obtain the certificate of occupancy for a two-family dwelling within nine months of the date upon which the requested variance was granted. I have moved this resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Madam Secretary, would you take the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Agarwal?
No.
Mr. Bowen?
No.
Mr. Perkins?
No.
Chairman McNary?
No. The motion fails to carry. Therefore, this resolution is not granted as an area variance.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have one other business. I need approval of the minutes of the September meeting. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Therefore, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there, is there other business?
Yes. I'm sorry. I didn't get who, I wasn't expecting that, the minutes. So what was the first and the second again?
I didn't.
You were first?
That's fine.
He was first. He was second.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. Okay. Is there any other? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, absolutely.
Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Go with you, Jim.
And we, we thank very much the Hyde Park.
Thank you, officer.
Thank you.
You did a great job, by the way.
Could I ask why we're having a meeting on Thursday?
Yes, you can.
On my anniversary?
Yes, you can. It was comforting. Thank you. Just in case. We never know.
Is that for Thanksgiving?
Yes, for Thanksgiving. The, the meetings for Thanksgiving and Christmas will be, the dates will be changed, and I've asked Kathleen to get out a schedule for those, so we'll be able to do those. Do we have any new applications that have arrived yet?
I'm anticipating two.
Two. Okay. Single family?
Single family, but a 280A access.
Okay. Is, do we have, we're waiting on the, on the, on the church camp thing. There's no way to expedite that?
Nope.
Okay.
Is there a time limit?
Nope.
It just seems, I-
You can call DPW and yell at them. I don't know. We haven't heard from DPW yet.
Can you give me a name and an address? I'll write a letter.
We'll, we'll figure something out tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Counsel, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
See, Kathleen?